Recording in progress.
I'm gonna... Rules to go by. Take a look at that and we'll be starting the meeting momentarily. Okay, call to order. This is the City of Danellen's Special City Council Workshop, February ninth, two thousand twenty-two, three thirty PM. Would you all please rise for protection. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, these remain sayors. Are anyone in the attendance that would like to give a prayer or speech, talk, observation, anything? And I want to probably take fifteen seconds of silence. On the world, you wanna kind of think about what's going on in the crisis with Russia and Ukraine? I hope that doesn't escalate into something much more than it is. So let's think about what's going on if that's what I'm thinking about. Okay, please be seated. Okay, Mandy, so roll call.
Yes, sir, Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Hanchard.
Here.
Capsuleman Rams.
Here.
Capsuleman Kitty.
Here.
And Capsuleman Povich is not here at all. She may be late or may not ever make this workshop. Jan Smith, Fire Director.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Forrest Sider, Public Works.
Here.
Regina Sid, Community Development.
Here.
Lieutenant Yaw.
Here.
Julie Dusowski, Burgers' Club.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant City Club.
Here.
Andrew Hanson, Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, the City Hall bulletin board, on February second, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you very much, so. This is a special workshop that I call, is a continuation of the efforts by your city council here to base up, resolve and come up with solutions to our leasing headquarters. I think this is a, I believe this meeting is going to be very substantial. We have some due diligence that has been seriously done. A couple of our officers will give us some guidance as to possibly what we can and can't do. For the record, this city council, for the last year and the council previous to us, they spent an enormous amount of time discussing this. Everyone knows it's an issue. Everybody wants a solution to it. It's been a tough decision, mainly the way I look at it, because of the limited funding we have in trying to make sure that we don't get into something that could be more than we can handle. If funding wasn't an issue, it would just be as simple as deciding what's best. And where we want, we want to do it. But would funding be something that is a consideration? And when you keep in mind some of the mistakes that have been made recently by the city on big ticket items. And now that the city has resolved a lot of issues from where now I'm good finding out what, there's a real reluctance to get into something because we really have all the facts and figures that we have to make it sound efficient. So with that, we have reached out to Mr. Patrick Shepherd, who is a developer with a lot of experience in commercial buildings and enterprises, along with a architect, Mr. Michael Banana, who I understand is on Zoom. See connection, please.
Mike.
Hello, Mike. So we have two men with credentials. We know who they are. We know their background. And they're going to give an analysis with some opinions for council. And we'll see where that leaves. So I do want to thank Mr. Banana for joining us today and giving us some time. Really appreciate it. And Mr. Shepherd, we're really looking forward to what you have to say. So if you come on up to the podium, we are all, all ears welcome to Danellen, sir.
Good afternoon.
You are a resident, but welcome to this class.
Yeah, I live here. I live, I live in here. I live around Dry.
Is that an echo?
Yes. That works fine.
I thought there were more of me here. Could you ask one to be quiet please? No, it just disappeared.
That's just your wife asking that.
No, 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 there's more truth to that than you know.
My name's Pat Shepherd. I've been here for three years as a resident. I first came to Danellen when I built Flomatic warehouses out at the airport. And I redesigned the airport for Marion County. Had to put the wells in and spent two years here building that facility and getting that done for the Brain family. And my family is from Lakeland and Panasoffki. So I have been coming here for about seventy years since I was five years old. So that tells you how old I am, right? Gives that, gives that away. But I thank you for the opportunity to serve you, an opportunity to serve my community and take a look at these buildings. My background briefly for each of you here is primarily in commercial development. I've owned about five or six construction development companies over the last forty years. I've probably built a billion dollars worth of property, maybe even more than that. But I've built everything from marinas to warehouses at Flomatic to, I was a design partner with Trump Tower. So I was a partner with Donald Trump for a while. Just a lot of exciting things in my life. And I had the opportunity to come here to help with my family who live in the villages. And then the mayor asked me if I would take a look and provide some support to help you with the lease location and the building projects. So I kind of pulled a shady deal. Shady deal to me is when you ask a favor for someone, and Mike Banana, who's with us today, has been an architect and friend of mine for thirty years. We've built many facilities together all over the state of Florida. And Mike is helping me with the design project to rebuild Holy Faith Church. And we're, we're going to enlarge that church, make it bigger. Mike and I have, he's worked with me now on that. We finished our design components. We're going to see these now in design work.
Yeah.
And Mike was very gracious one day when I said, I need you to come up and see the church. I've got a problem up here and I'm taking you to lunch. And well, at lunch, I said, do you have another four or five hours? I just have a couple of buildings I'm going to walk through with you. We can kind of talk about it. Did you have a good lunch? And so he got, he got waylaid. But he's a gracious dear friend. And we went through the two buildings. We looked at the buildings from many different points. Structural points, one, electrical renovation cost, the conditional cost of the buildings. And then we looked at how we integrate those into multiple things. So Mike, Mike got here by default. And he's more than gracious to be here, volunteered to be here and answer any of your questions today. And we're looking forward to a fairly brief presentation. It's only going to take us twenty to thirty minutes. I'm told, Mandy, you have the mute button, right? I've already told Mandy, if Mike talks too much, right? Hit the mute button. Mike's, Mike's probably smiling right now. Fortunately, I cannot see him. And it works out well. But my, my background in construction, I am not an engineer. I'm not an engineer. I have no credentials of an engineer. I am a scientist and a developer. I have developed so much property you can't imagine. And I'm just glad to be here and help with this. So why don't we jump into the presentation? Unless anyone has any questions about me and my credentials, I'm happy to answer those as well. All good? Let's fire it up. Presentations are normally very boring, so I'll try to drop a joke or two to keep you mesmerized and occupied. The, the police department analysis, we did several buildings. There we go. Next one. First thing that we, that I took a look at was what type of police department do you want to build? What type do you want to remodel? What do you have now that can be remodeled? How do we do it? What are, what are the structural issues of your existing buildings? And so to do that, we took a look at many different things. Next slide, please. We, we went into the FEMA protocols. And some people are not familiar, even in government, that there are protocols that require a category four building structure that serves the public that is occupied by a critical service. And the police department is a critical service. They just don't give tickets out. They protect our community. And I don't think we're one of those communities like Oregon that don't honor, respect and cherish our police departments. So it, it is, it is important that you understand why we have, what we're saying in this presentation is you need a level four category for essential building. And how do we remodel or can we remodel the existing building? Can we, what can we do with the church, the Old Souls Church? And what do we need to do for the future? That's all kind of in this presentation. So the FEMA material is up here. Next one, please. And we kind of, we're kind of going to go through this. Now, this just talks about FEMA requirements for the level of, of wind performance, the level of, of need performance of a police station. And that's great. So just, we're giving you kind of what FEMA has to say. This, this has to be a level four building. Next one, please. Again, this, this is just brief. You all know that the wind code here has gone to a hundred and fifty mile an hour for essential buildings. It's a hundred and twenty mile an hour for non-essential buildings. But the difference between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and twenty mile an hour, you've seen hurricanes and you see what a hurricane can do to a facility. A hundred and fifty miles an hour is hard to, anything to survive. It's very difficult. Go to the next one, please. One of the things you have to look at when you look at old buildings is how were they built in the beginning? You know, this particular wall had no structural foundation, no four vertical columns in the wall, no steel in the wall. Wind hit it, pop, it came over. That could happen to the existing police station. Because that station, we don't know how it's built. The newer building, the church, same situation. We don't know how that building is structurally put together to meet the new or even existing wind codes. Next one, please. This is just kind of example when a building is built improperly and you, you put air conditioning units on the top of the building, you haven't secured them. When you build these buildings, you would not think something like air conditioning units would blow away, but it was only wind that did this damage. Next one, please. Again, a fire department with improperly attached roofing systems did not even survive. Roof came right off. Next one, please. One of the things that, that the state of Florida requires, which is the emergency response team, is that any police department has to be backup and fully operational within twenty-four hours of a major event. And that, that is important, that our police department, in an emergency, get up and get running and save us. Fire department, same way. Emergency rescue, same way. These are rules by the state of Florida. They establish how these facilities should be built. Next one, please. Next one, please. I'm not going to read things to you, all right? It's in the reading thing, what that particular page said. Florida building codes require a level four construction that is different from this building. It's different from the buildings you have down the street. It's different than any building in this town. I only see one or two buildings that would be at this structural level. That's in the building code. And it's an additional requirement above the Florida standard building codes. So you need to understand that you've got one cost here, right? And then you've got building a structurally intact, you know, sound building that can stand up to the pressures of the environment. We're talking worst case. And worst case is when you need the police the most and to survive this event. This is just an example of a, of a police department building. You know, some, it's built here in Florida. Go to the next one, please. This looks familiar, right?
Yes.
So, so this, we gave you a side view of this building. And I went, I went through and started, and here's the rear view. Mike, can you see this?
Yep, I got you. I'm here.
I think he meant the other mic.
The other mic. That was, that was good one.
His lips moved, but I didn't hear him saying anything.
Give us a thumbs up.
Did I actually come across?
He's unmuted.
Hello?
He should be all the top voices, right?
So the issue is when we use our audio system to...
Am I... Am I coming through?
We can go live on, my, my video system has voice as well. All I, all I have to do is unmute him on that system. What do you think?
Yeah, and then he, I'll be in the Zoom. I'll be in the Zoom and he can just talk through that, that works.
Mike.
Holding him in your hands.
I got the whole world. I'm trying to turn off the church part. Just want you to know that right now. Mike, you're in. Current volume up as high as it'll go. I'm going to get my volume up here somewhere.
Probably on your one, two, three buttons. There should be a volume button right on it. I can never...
Eyes will go. No, you're not. They move it up and down? Sometimes it's on the other side of that? No.
So there's something happening is that something on that map is putting a secondary volume into the receiver.
Then let's shut this one down and let's go with the voice. Yeah, stop. Go back to Zoom on audio. Go back to Zoom on audio, Mike. And I'm going to shut you down.
Okay, hang on. I'm, I'm unmuted.
You can't see how handsome Mike is. That's a little bit of Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Hi there.
He's smiling.
Hello.
So, um...
All right, so I'm going to shut this down, Mike.
Why, why are you going to shut that down?
What?
Why are you going to shut that down?
You can leave him up. We just can't have him in audio somehow. Right, Mandy? Yeah, but I got to make sure...
Was I, was you here now?
That we could hear him through Zoom.
Why don't we try to get him? I've got him following up Zoom again.
He's on Zoom still.
I'm Pat.
Unmuted, but I can't hear him if he's saying anything.
Mike, I'm going to shut this down.
All right. Bye. Can, can I be, am I heard? Am I being heard now?
He's still there. He's still there.
Hello?
So we need to turn that computer off. Yeah, we just need to shut it down.
Okay, but can everyone here...
How are you?
Getting you?
Good.
I sure appreciate all that stuff.
No, 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 no. Oh, is that Jan's computer? Yes. Oh.
Hello?
Plans went astray.
He's unmuted.
Also, I'm unmuted.
Okay. Am...
We're taking a two-minute...
Am I there?
Break for technical difficulty.
Am I there?
I can talk through this. I mean, Mike and I know this building back and forth. I wanted to hear from Mike because it's purely his credentials and his analysis of building that you have in front of you. Because I don't want to bring somebody in on me, you know, who has credentials, does live here, third-party analysis, even while I've been disarmed here. He's very, he's very, 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 very dependent on his building to give us an opinion of what we do.
So Patrick, let's take about a two-minute break and let them work on this so we can really focus on you. It's really, it's really tough to focus on you when there's conversation going on over that.
I understand.
Yes, if you just take a recess, we're going to, we're going to shut Zoom down, try to break it back up. It's not, it's not part of the problem, something with the audio.
So when you come back, take it from the top?
No worries.
No, from the back. No, I'm vetoing you from the back.
Everybody, we're just going to give this a few minutes until we get the techno. I'm finding it very distracting to have in that door open and close and conversation. It's, this is too important not to be focused on.
So anyone that is on Zoom before I end this meeting, I'm going to end the meeting and you're going to have to log back into Zoom once we restart the meeting.
Good afternoon, everybody, I think.
Am I there?
Recording in progress.
All right.
Hello?
Mike, we can hear you fine. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Mandy, are we ready to get back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the record, please note that the workshop had a fifteen-minute pause in it for a techno difficulty. So we are back in our workshop. It is four oh five. So, Mr. Shepherd, why don't you, so we can re-engage with you, start back the requirement for a, a police building, what the requirement of the code is, and then work to where, where you are. Okay, right there, that's good. Just get us, get us kind of back in the train of thought that the police building has different requirements in the different building.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Council persons, thank you also.
And we, we apologize. Can't foresee these sort of things.
Tech difficulties, we just work with and go with the flow.
So we were talking about FEMA and the FEMA regulations for a police department building and how they are higher standards than normal construction as approved by the state of Florida or any federal entity. So FEMA has a category four is the filling, is the police station requirements. You have to, all your emergency services and critical care, which is what we were discussing. Go ahead to the next slide. And we talked about those requirements and the levels of performance of the buildings as well as the people that occupy those buildings. And that's right up there is the highest you can go. Go ahead, next slide, please. And this, just to highlight again, the wind codes in Florida, we happen to now fall just barely into a hundred and fifty mile an hour wind zone, but we are in it. And this slide shows what happens when a structurally inadequately built concrete block wall, when wind hits it, they fold and they just fall down. This, this wall had no steel in it, no iron in it, and was, and passed every construction standard. But it did not meet the highest standards by level four buildings. Next slide, please.
Pat, if I could add something to the wind codes?
What's that?
To make it a little clearer? If I could add something to the wind codes, just to make it a little clear?
Sure.
The, the, the building code has got different levels of service to what Pat was talking about. A normal conventional building would be a, a, a risk factor two. I've done schools, universities all over the state, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of them. They're generally all capped at risk level three. Police stations and emergency facilities are four. They actually have different code levels. And when Pat was talking about the wind level, the wind level for, uh, risk four is a hundred and fifty miles an hour. For a risk two, which would be every other building, a commercial building, the wind level is only a hundred and thirty. And with that, it doesn't sound like a lot, but the wind load from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty, the requirements of two of the buildings, is about a third more wind pressure on the building. So it's actually very significant when they say a risk four building, like a fire station or police station or emergency service is a risk four as opposed to every other building. So when Pat was saying it's a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and fifty for a risk four building. If you were to build a normal building, a commercial building, it would be a hundred and thirty. Just if that makes it a little bit clearer.
And also, we're showing you buildings that have had wind and wind tore off the roof of the, of the fire station there. And those folks aren't going back to work in twenty-four hours. That's one of the things you have to really look at. And this facility, in the existing building you have there now, I think if winds get above forty or fifty mile an hour, chief is going to have a requirement to send his teams home because the, the building's structurally not sound enough for them to occupy that building during a storm. And, and those are difficult things. Go ahead to the next building. That's, that's the Florida building code. We kind of skipped over that because it's just a lengthy code. It's the step-up code requirements for the level four buildings. We've established that parameter baseline for you. Go to the next slide, please. This is our, we're back to our, our building, the existing building. And if you'll stop right there, please, that is the back of the building. Mike, would you be kind enough to speak to the four different levels of construction and how these buildings have been cobbled together? And then if you'll just, if you'll explain the roof issues, please, and the structural and technical issues? Thank you.
Well, the buildings, you mean the four different additions. They've been all put together and just sort of quick walkthrough. You can see by the very, I think Pat's got a picture of, of like a sixteen-inch wide wall. They literally built almost four buildings next to one another as opposed to really an addition onto an existing building. So you have all these different structural systems that you can't really make any, any sense of because it was really built in a hodge, a hodgepodge. We didn't do any destructive investigation. We didn't take down any walls. So looking at the roof lines, the windows don't line up with the exterior wall, which was bizarre. Going through different level changes, so it seems like they just added a building onto the next building, which means it'd be almost impossible to unify the structure and be able to get it to behave like a building, a single building, with all of the different additions. It would take, it would take quite a bit. Nothing is ever impossible given enough money. But being at budget was a requirement, a strict requirement. The idea is there's no efficiency in trying to renovate this building from a structural aspect, let alone try to make it a category four, which means that if the walls aren't reinforced, and I've done this with schools, you basically cut the inside of the block and you add concrete into the wall with steel rebar and you try to pin it all down as if it was new. But if there's no foundations, then you do foundation modifications. So it just becomes this chase, chasing your tail where you're trying to save money, you're not really getting anything there that's capable of saving money. I don't know if that, that answered the question, Pat?
Yeah, it does, Mike. Let me kind of take it from there, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Mike and I were joking with each other about mice and rats and snakes and termites and how it would be a great place for them, but not people. It's just a poorly put-together building. So if we'll just go through the next group of slides here briefly, go ahead. You know, when, when I said cobble together, you see electrical lines that are inappropriately out of code installed in the building. This actually goes up to the roof. Here's the back of the building. See the lower left-hand corner of that slide, a great big crack? I stopped counting at eighty cracks. I got up to seventy and said, that's enough for today. There's cracks all over the building, even when, when they tried to structurally put them together. You can see how the, the electrical wiring's hobbled together, the code, the, your, those are just some of the cracks. Some of these cracks are superficial in the stucco, but some of these cracks are structural in nature. And go ahead, next one. And so again, you can see how electrical wiring has been hobbled together. This particular wiring was put into code. Other wiring in the building is not to code. You have air conditioning units crammed into a, a room that is your evidence room. Evidence comes into this room, then goes into the evidence room. This is the processing room for evidence. Go to the next. And in that processing room for evidence, if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see a lamp by itself. And it goes to the outdoors. That's your evidence. see a lamp by itself, and it goes to the outdoors, that's your evidence room. That has full access to all types of debris, I mean, it's just a sad state of affairs. Go to the next. This is, this is what I call my great shock of the day, it is termite droppings, and they're about two inches thick, and that's in your evidence room. So the evidence room ceiling's about seven feet tall, uh, you see those cabinets, how they're compressed, there's no space in there, everything's crammed in there, and more importantly is it has access to the outside open air, access through a hole in the back wall of the building, and the termites are, well, they're, looks like they're having a good time. Go to the next one, please. Again, just, it's all cobbled together, it's the most amazing building, I've never seen one quite this bad. Go to the next one, please. This, again.
I could, I could second that, as far as 35 years of being an architect. Um, this is one of the worst, yeah, one of the worst.
The door to the left is 18 inches deep, and the reason is, they built a wall, and they came in, when did they add on? They built another wall. So is there a footer under that wall? Was there ever a footer under the first wall built in 1926? You know, that kinda holds everything together. Uh, go to the next slide, please. This is a, an evidence room, and that door meets no code at all. The windows, see on the right hand side, are false windows, they are not put into the wall. It is, the wall there is eight inches thick, and then the concrete block, uh, brick wall on the outside is eight inches thick, it's like you built two walls and then stuck the windows in there. It's really bizarre, they meet no code. On the left hand side, when you go into the main, like reception, uh, work area, the large work area where they have all the tables and they look, air extinguishers and process equipment, uh, the lamps are like huge, eight foot lamps, and there's no way to service the lamps, and you have wiring that lays up in there, and it just amazes me, they put the ceiling up after they put the lamps in. That's another bizarre, you can't maintain that, it's, it's, uh, it's terrible. Next one, please. So then, I asked Mike to send me an email, I'll let y'all read through that email, he goes extensively into, uh, the design, the problems, the issues, what we saw on the walk through, and I'll let, Mike, what'd you describe as the best use of the building?
I believe it was, uh, road fill, crushed concrete. There's a lot of concrete block there, and I think the best use of the building would be to crush it down and use it for a road better foundation. That was actually the parting, the parting joke we had with the wonderful officer that walked us through. So, um, that was my best impression.
Yeah, and Mike says that jokingly, right, the building's no better than, for road grade, it is a dangerous building, our police should not be in that building, and we need to take a look at what you're gonna do, of course, that's, that's your decision. My, my review is just of the existing facility, uh, our, our comment to it was tear it down, maybe you can use a slab for parking, but even that's debatable. So, I'm gonna stop at this particular point in, in time and ask, do you have any questions about the police building? Cause from this building, we're gonna go to the other church, the church. Mayor, any questions at all?
Very straightforward and to the point, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. We, we tried to make this brief, concise, and only the facts. So, next building that we're gonna talk about is the church, oh, there's, that picture was road grade, by the way, that's, go back to that last one. There's your police department, right there, road grade, go to the next one, please. Um, church that you purchased, we went all through the church, uh, we've taken a look at, uh, the trusses in the church, the church is a nice building, it was a, it was not a bad purchase, the, it's, it's not suitable for a police department, and that's just kind of a summary. I went to the summary first on this building. Nice piece of land, nice, you know, the location's certainly acceptable, there are issues with this building as well, there is no, uh, Mike, I'm jumping on your thunder, go ahead and, and, uh.
No, no, you're, you're pretty much, of what we talked about before about the, the level four building, the problem is with this building, it was actually a very well-built building, um, and for a level two building, a normal use is a church or a commercial use, it, it's one thing, but when you're trying to harden retroactively this building with the immense amount of roof and the immense span, it just increases the, uh, the amount of retrofitting you would need to do if you wanted to bring it to that level to meet those codes. Um, with that, you'd need a study with this, but likely you would be required to, to bring the building up to, um, the present day codes, impact windows, um, harden up the roof, hurricane straps, hold downs, you're basically re-engineering a building, a significant building, uh, I think it's about 60, 600 square feet, um, which seemed like it was more than what your program was, um, that you're, you have to really take, take it as a whole, which the idea is you need to harden the shell, you can't just harden a portion of it. So, that's, that was our, the takeaway from that, where it's a nice building, but I think it would be, uh, rather costly, um, to, uh, to, to be efficient about the way you would need to go after the shell itself. The other issues were, the electrical, uh, seemed to be very, very, um, um, underrepresented between the meter, the, the panel itself was rather small, I think there's only two outlets in each room, which wouldn't meet current code or current use, and then to go back and re-engineer that system, and then the mechanical systems, which have a whole different set of requirements, would go back and to re-engineer those, so you're really taking the guts of the building to bring it up to whatever the current requirements would be, um, for, and the idea is if you're getting a, a building, a new building, you want good air quality, you want some good longevity in the materials, you, so you're gonna put all this money into it, you wanna be able to reap the rewards over time, to have, to have a good value. So, this building, I think, came up with, it's, it's a, it's a good building, but I don't think this is gonna be a, a, a prime candidate for renovation. It could be done, but again, it's for, it's for how much?
Yeah, let me, uh, help it on that, uh, if you don't mind, Mike, I'm, I met with Terry Fagan a couple of times on the, on this church building, you know, delightful guy, well-known in this community, uh, we tried just about every week we could, looking at it, can you remodel it, can you meet the level code, and the only way you can meet the level code is take that entire roof off and put a new roof on, new trusses, new everything, you might as well start over, cause you're gonna ruin the inside of that building when you take the roof off. And then when you try to redo everything, it's just, you're gonna spend more, it's, it's good money, excuse me, bad money after worse money, is the only way to say that. So it's a, it's a good building, it's a great building, not for what you wanna do. And that's, that's kind of a summary. Go through the slides on this real quick, so, you know, you know you have a great piece of land, it's got parking, go to the next one, please. You know, and, and just, just items that you have to be really conscious of, the winds don't meet wind code, a level four building, you don't know if the inside structural walls, there's concrete block walls, uh, we don't know what those will do, how were they repinned, you know, how were they put together, do they have vertical poured iron steel in them? We don't know any of that. Uh, there's no outlets on, on the outside walls or the inside walls, they only have outlets on the hallway. Uh, next one, please. The air conditioning system is a unique design, perfect for a church, terrible if you have any kind of different occupancy inside that church. There's four units inside the church, they're properly placed for a church, if you have occupancy inside the building, you gotta redo the air conditioning system.
Pat, mentioning about the privacy, about the, with the returns and the holes in the wall and, uh, which is something you really can't do anymore.
Yeah, I will, I will. See this, this lower middle picture there, that's, that's a return, that return is in the wall between the room and the hallway, and the returns are in the hallway. That's not to code, and it's not something we can build or change today, you have to redo the air conditioning ductwork completely to raise this building up to a level four, it's just not worth it. And of course, the windows are operational windows, they work great for a level two building, but for police department, they gotta go. And windows are about $800 each. Uh, go to the next slide, please. The truss system, well-built, well-done, level two building. These trusses were, were probably designed back in those days to 80 miles an hour, back in the eighties, um, they're, they're clean, they're, we didn't see any damage to them, uh, exceptionally clean, the people kept the church really in great shape, but again, they have to go, they will not meet any wind codes whatsoever. And I'm not even getting to issues like the, the membrane materials on the roof and, and all of that stuff. Go to the next one, please. And this was, this is Mike's, uh, written email to me about the condition of this building and its comments, and I'll let, that's for the record, it's, it's, uh, in your, in each of your folders, and I'll be glad to provide the original email if there's any questions about its authenticity in his comments. He allowed me to put this into public record. Uh, go to the next slide, please. It's just more hit, more of his comments, he kinda goes on and on about the building. Uh, next slide, slide, please. This is what you can have, this is just a picture of a conventional construction, uh, this is a police department building, it, it's metal roof, has, had, you know, a little bit awkward for me, but I wouldn't build a building like this, but it is a solid building. Go to the next slide, please. Again, you can see the police department buildings have a wide variety of construction techniques that are, that are built for them. Next slide, please. These are just, again, police department buildings, these are all in the state of Florida, I didn't take any buildings, they're out of the state, they're all in small communities, I made sure I had no police department building from a community that was, you know, 100,000 or more people. These were, only one of these pictures is from a community of 10,000, the rest of these are all from communities of between 2,000 people and 3,000 people, cause I know, you know, we're, we're conscious of dollars, and I wanted to show you what other communities have done. Next slide, please. Uh, this particular building is a SIPs building, and, and I'm just showing you some different things that you can evaluate, and, cause we're gonna suggest that you bring a team in and evaluate what's the best way to do this and the best way to cost it. So this particular building is structural foam, um, it is, uh, it's a structural foam product, it, it, uh, rather amazing, the whole building goes up in about 14 days, and then you do all your build out. So one of the things we were concerned about is subcontractors are tough to get a hold of right now, they're busy, they're overwhelmed, the, the whole economy, uh, supply chain issues, all that stuff we have to worry about. So I, I wanted to give you some alternatives, next slide, please. This is that building going up, as you see, uh, they put a foundation in, and those are, those are structural foam walls, they're six to eight inches thick, and they're just a regular wall, they're, except, instead of having plywood or, 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 or some type of plaster or plasterboard, uh, these have metal coatings on, on your walls, so your walls actually have a metal coating, you can clad over that with something else, but this is, again, I'm just showing us a technique you can use for, to accelerate, and there's other, there's other techniques out there that are available, that meet the level four requirements as well. Next slide, please. And again, this is that same building rapidly being put up, uh, the panels are delivered, um, it just, it gets you ahead of the curve for time, doesn't really save you any money, might be a little less, but not a lot, it's a time element, time is money, love. Next slide, please.
It gets, to, to add to that, it, it, you could enclose the building, which is usually the toughest part, think of how long a block building is up, but you could actually enclose the shell weather tight within that size of the building, what Pat was talking about, seven to 10 days, but the thing is at that point, after you have a closed shell, everything else can happen in the building, as opposed to 10 days with blocks, then you have to put structure up, and you have to put the roof up, where this way, it's all sort of pre-orchestrated, it shows up onto the site, and then the erection is rather quick. It's a very interesting way to go. And, uh, like I said, you could put stucco on the outside, you could drywall on the inside, you could put all the finishes you want on top of it, but this is, and it's a very, the thing is, is very nice, it's a very energy efficient building. And I think looking forward to what you would wanna have, with any building you have, however you build it, you'd wanna have a very good energy efficiency going on, because that's gonna be a, a cost for you going on into the future, um, year over year, month over month.
Thank you, Mike. One, one of the things, uh, I need to tell you upfront is Mike and I have no interest in this company we just showed you, we have no interest in any companies financially whatsoever.
No.
It'll kinda challenge us sometimes, why are we showing something? To get, to lighten your minds up, you know, make you think, make you look for something that's exciting. So, recommendations, number one, build a new critical level four police building. I talked to, uh, the chief, he thinks 4,600 square feet is probably the right size, is that up or down? Up, right? So 4,600 square feet. Um, second recommendation is you get three people together that have experience in this area to guide you through this process. Uh, third recommendation is that whatever architect you bring in that you interview, or however your process is gonna be, to make sure they have experience in critical facility design. There are a lot of architects that do not have this experience. Local architect is, is available, uh, I've talked to several of them, I have not interviewed them to determine, uh, their, their skillset with this level of design requirement. Uh, fourth recommendation for you is local contractor for your construction processing, and I'm recommending you do design-build, uh, at-risk bid process is almost impossible right now, you wanna hold your costs down, you wanna get it done fast, uh, enter into a contract management with, with somebody. You know, find somebody who really can run this job, project manager that you can bring on board just for the project to work with the chief and your, your other teams here to deliver the product that best serves the community. So, you know, I've talked to Fagan about it, I said, Fagan, would you be interested in doing this with the city? And Fagan said, I could, no. And I said, Fagan? And, and so, he was, he was really gracious to say, yes, but with conditions, right? And so I can, sure, if you ever wanna talk about it, we can talk about that. Um, my last one is, develop design that's functional for needs of the police, this design really needs to work for them, and also needs to work for the community, because this building in an emergency becomes a public building. People may have to go here for rescue, people may have to go here to be protected, not from anything but the storm at hand. Last slide, please. Discussion points, what are your options, what building types are you gonna go with, what's your site plan, where should you put it, what kind of project management do you wanna enter into? These are complicated processes that you need to bring somebody on board that has the skill in construction management, has the skill in project management to deliver to you the project that you want on time, in budget, to suit the needs of the police department. There are people like me out there, certainly all of them younger than me, but, thank you, but, but really, you have an opportunity here to find yourself someone that, and I'll help you interview process if you like, I'll help you any way I can, so will Mike. You know, Mike has been very gracious with his time, and Mike, I can't thank you enough for being on this call today, don't send me a bill.
It's been, it's been a pleasure to, to, well, just the next time I come up, you owe me a grouper, that was a great grouper, um, worth the trip. So, I would, I would just go to add that to look forward and be, um, have thoughts about the energy efficiency of the building, that's really a big thing, um, potentially even having it solar ready, um, so this way you wouldn't be dependent if the grid goes down, if you lose all the power during a storm, I think that would be something that would be between an emergency generator and where some of the new technologies, so I think the, the technologies are basically part of your friend now with, with starting this up. Um, solar has come way down, batteries have come down, way down, and just over the next period of time, you're gonna be making this selection, there'll be a whole lot more. I would say that would be money well spent at this point, cause it will save you immensely in the future. So, um, I think that's the last bit that I would, uh, put into everything that's been said. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to help out, however I can, to help the community, Pat, and, uh, anybody else who you bring into the process, so.
Thank you, Mike, I really appreciate it. The one thing that, um, Mike touched on is that you can do your building in phases, right? So you can even do your finishes in phases, depending on what your budgetary requirements are. Um, you know, I'm doing the church in three phases, budgetary requirements, as, as we have those. You can do, you can do your police department in phases, but there are critical items inside the police department that you cannot do in phases. You know, your IT, communications, safety, armory, all of those items are critical pa- All of those items are critical pathway items, communication between the teams. It goes on and on in the police department. So many things the police department does that most people, I mean, I know y'all are aware, but most people listening to this presentation will not be aware of the requirements of the police department and what they really do to serve the community in areas of security. Is a huge issue in this day and age and it's going to be a bigger issue in this day and age. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions. You've got sites to look at and analyze, opportunities to look at and analyze. There's a lot of buildings, you know, they're kind of in bad shape on the main drag. So there's potential locations there where those buildings could maybe be raised to the ground and we build a police department there. I'm not here to speak about sites. You know, I'm here to, to talk to you about the two buildings, explain our position on the two buildings and answer any questions. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Wow. Thank you so much. Wonderful presentation. Appreciate it. So what I'll do is we'll go down the line with counsel and see what comments or questions counsel have, as I usually go last. So Ms. Kenny, do you have any questions or comments?
Oh, I have a lot of questions and probably too many comments, but I truly appreciate what you have given to us. We know that it is a big, big task. We feel heavily, heavily in regards to our responsibilities to our citizens and to our police. And it sounds like we have a lot of work ahead in terms of research. So I'm, I'm just very grateful for your background and for the information that you've given us. The only thing that's worse than making a decision is making a wrong decision. Greatly appreciated.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. Shepherd, for your information. It was very, very detailed. I appreciate it very much. And I am so glad that we have this so I can look back on it. Thank you.
Good. You're welcome. Vice Mayor?
Hey, Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Panetta, thank you very much for joining us on Zoom. And apologies for the technical issues that nobody can ever predict. Thank you for the-
That's okay. You roll with it. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for the third party look at all, at some of the buildings that we have currently and confirming some of the things that we've already known and glad that you even highlighted more regarding our police department that we currently have that we've been working, I mean, even back when I was much younger. We wanted to get the place out of there. The, as, and I was glad to hear that the, the church building is a healthy building. I know that's been a concern of some, but that it is basically, it is a good building. It is a healthy building.
Yes, ma'am.
And that has never been an issue. So that was good to hear. As far, just out of quick curiosity, if we did a, but I like round numbers, 5,000 square foot building, what size for parking, for probably a storage unit, I'm assuming? What size property would you recommend for that location?
That's going to depend on how many vehicles you want to park. I did discuss that with the chief. He was talking about 16 vehicles, the maximum in the, in the maximum use, which it's 16 spaces, not 16 vehicles.
Okay, yeah.
Let me, let me correct that one right away. I saw you light up. What? We're buying more vehicles? No, 16 spaces and all those spaces take up, you know, existing police vehicles as well as visitors, as well as equipment. So the lot size is going to be dictated actually by building code and site code. I would, I would think you wouldn't need that big of a site.
More than quarter acre, less than half?
Oh, a quarter acre should be gracious amount. But again, water retention is an issue. There, there's so many other issues that go into that size. You know, where's the water going to go? How are we going to trap it? If it doesn't meet, if it's an existing site that has no water retention, does the city have the capacity for that? Drain off to be captured and controlled?
Impervious?
Impervious surfaces.
Thank you. Never say that word right. Okay. And I think those were kind of, I'm sure I have other questions. But I definitely, and I like that you said to try and form a group with chief on experience, not just have Valerie come in and say, I want a building with, you know, aluminum and purple windows and green doors, you know, but actually people that, well, you know. But I mean, no, but you know, get, get the details of it, not just the fluff of it. So that's, that I think was a very good critical point to take away. And, and I appreciate you recommending that. So thank you very much to both gentlemen. And I guess we owe you both a nice dinner.
I never turn down food.
It'd be a pleasure. And I can say that your, your comment is, would be called programming. And I think that that's really key to get all the questions, get your grocery list of the things that you, the building needs to do for you. But I would also put in a bit of a wish list, too. It's easier to cut the issues later. Bring them up as opposed to thinking you don't have money for it. Put them on the table because lots of times there's ways to incorporate them when you're going through the program, either in a, either in a phase response and make room for it. So that's really important, I would say, when planning a new building that's going to be living on for the next 50 years. That's the way we typically would do schools, universities, buildings, where you're putting substantial value in it. You look at over the next period of time of making it maybe not sold now, but you would make it sold already, which might be just putting conduit in, which is really cheap. But it makes it easy later on is going back and redoing it. So the programming stage would be a very, very important phase before you get, kind of like, that's the thing that gets you into the game. That's before you start the design, is the pre, pre-designed programming. So think of it that way, where that's just putting your grocery list together.
And thank you. That was, I just asked me if I could ask one more question. And that was kind of, and I meant to ask this of both of you. What, you, you kind of said we could do this piecemeal or as he described it. In phases. I mean, I have in my mind what would be the most important phases, but because like you almost said, it's, it's almost every part of a police department is the most important phase. It's the gunnery, it's the armory room, it's the evidence room, it's the communications room. So what rooms wouldn't we do? I guess is maybe even a better question than asking what would be the first rooms to do? What rooms could we not do first?
It's really not the rooms that we look at. What we look at are, when I talk about phasing, I'm not talking about we don't build this wall, but we build that wall. No, we build both walls, right?
You don't finish it off?
It's the finishes. The finishes can run 30% of a building cost. So you've got to have the building secured, roof, exterior walls. Interior walls we can put up as we want to. But there, the way I look at the police department is what I've done, and I've walked through it many, many times now, almost there's, there's no room, extra room in there. You know, they're, they need more room. And each room has a function. So the nice thing is you, when you lay it out and design it, you can hold back the phasing cost of your finishes. That's, that's, that's the only one you'd want to hold back on when I'm talking about phases.
Right, no, I, and, yeah, no, I'm just because of my background, my family's in construction is why I'm saying you can put in all the, the basics and then finish it off and make it the third bedroom or whatever residential.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I, I would also add to that, the technology. Because there's the baseline of what you need to get everything up and functional. It might not be everything you would really want because that's really important. The idea is if you build in the, the infrastructure to add those sorts of things, which might be additional power capacity to an area. Because that gets to be expensive afterward. That's, that's where, again, where it talks about as far as phasing, where you might put conduits in where you don't particularly think you need them. That might be running under slab or any security systems like that to make it more available. So I think you look at everything that way from what becomes maybe first cost and what becomes the best, the better cost later on as far as additive into the systems.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Okay. I have a few questions and a few comments. You've just done a wonderful job of clarifying some things that counsel has been grasping for, for a long time. The first one is the word that was in the streets that the current building was so, in such disrepair and was constructed, construction on top of construction, that it made absolutely no sense to put serious money into the building. That has been pretty much said out there. And now we have proof positive that that assumption is correct. So what your report has done for the city is to eliminate the retrofitting of the current building as a no-go. The best you can do with the current building is put some lipstick on it while you live in it, it sounds like, right? Then the other portion of your report that really is very significant to me was explaining the requirements for what you call an essential building, category four building. There was the assumption that if we purchased a very well-built building that was very well-maintained, that it would just be simply a matter of fixing the inside, doing, doing some, some structural changes. But there was never really, at least from my standpoint, a true understanding that a central building, category, a level four building is something far above. But it is, so if, I think this counsel fully understood at the time of purchase of this church building a little over a year ago, that it would be an essential building and regardless of how well it was construction, constructed for a church, it would not be up to speed for what you need for a police station. I think the counsel may have looked at purchasing that building a little differently. So what you have basically have reported to us that any current building that we might find, regardless of how well it looks or how well it's constructed, there'd be problems trying to buy up any building and retrofitting it into a police station because you would have to get it up to the codes that are part of an essential building, correct?
Yes, sir.
So what you have done is you have really cleared the path that the consideration of purchasing a current building that's in place, regardless of how well it's built, it would, chances are it would not be built in a way that would satisfy the codes for an essential building. So what you have done is kind of simplified the task of counsel that if this is going to be done, if it can be done, pretty much our choice is is build new, where, what, how much money and what we want to go, how we want to go about doing it. That's pretty much what I'm interpreting the report to be.
That's exactly what it says.
Now with that said, the church building that was purchased along with that property is a beautiful building for things other than a police department.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
If we had, if we weren't trying to resolve the police station dilemma, if counsel a year or two ago had said, you know, we really need a gathering building, a community center. There's no building that the city owns that we can have functions where we can have big meetings. Based on what you have reported and what Mr. Panetta has said, if we had purchased that building with that property with the intent of making it a community center, this would have been a home run.
Absolutely.
For 325,000 buying that building with six lots.
That was a great purchase.
With all that parking that would be tied into the historic section. If you eliminated the police building out of the equation, that would have been a very progressive step for the city to have made. So that, that's kind of interesting in itself. One question I have for you, it's a little bit more specific, is as far as building new, I have always leaned towards that. We have talked about brick and mortar. We've talked about modular. And now you have come up with the concept of the SIP. Could you just kind of go over the, the pluses and minuses of what we're trying to do as it relates to those three choices?
Sure. Mike, you want to take that or you want me to take it?
We could do that piano to hand. I would say one of the things that I'm attracted to with the SIPs, and there, there are drawbacks as well. So not to, not to make everything in a nutshell. It has all the Florida requirements as far as certifications. So that's not a problem. It is tremendously energy efficient as far as a thermal value. And it goes together very, very tightly. So you have a very tight building. There's, that's very good for air quality on the inside, as long as you have a good air conditioning system. And that's the requirements for tight buildings. Very, very efficient. It goes up very quick for, and that depends on the simplicity of the building and the size. When we're talking about a 4,600 square foot building, I'll, I'll limit it to that. It goes up very quick compared to brick and mortar. And there's a lot of parts and pieces in brick and mortar now. There's a lot of problem with supply chain. There's a lot of problem with getting a lot of different craft. After you get a slab up, you could stick the walls up. I think Pat could probably share with you a couple of videos to watch them. Basically just what, the panels are relatively light. Now they stand up into a track and it gets screwed down. And it takes nothing more than basically carpentry skills. And you'd have red iron or something for, for structure. So that from the level of simplicity is where I've seen SIPs works well. The negative is there's not a lot of people that know it and they're, people are afraid of the unknown. The masonry, it's tried and true. Everybody understands it. There's a lot of people that know how to do it, except there's just not a lot of capacity right now in the systems. And it's a lot of parts and pieces. Block goes up, steel goes up, fill goes in, surfaces go on. And all that stuff before you want it getting it complete. And then you're, you're basically at the helm of the weather as you're putting that up in the season. Steel and, and insulated panels or steel and metal panel and things like that as far as modular, that type of modular building has a certain amount of economies for putting up a lot of space and then being able to subdivide the interior of it. And talking about modular buildings, not modular, I think you were talking about having modules built somewhere and then brought onto site and then put onto foundations.
That is correct. Something, something that's pre-constructed and brought in.
Pre-engineered, pre-engineered, pre-constructed.
Right.
That has got benefits from the same point as far as the aspect. A lot of this is going to happen within a factory. The cost tends to be a little bit higher on that because you have to not only build a building capable of withstanding the wind code, it's got to drive from one point to another. And there's a lot of rigidity that goes into that that would not, materials that would not be necessary. And you're limited in the size to what's capable of moving on a road to the size of the rooms. With a small building, that's not as, not as much of an issue. The larger the building, obviously, the more problem it is. Because if you can only take a room that's eight feet wide down a road and you have to build something that's 16 or 20 feet wide, it poses problems. And so that's, I think, a little bit as far as the compare and contrast. And to me right now, the more moving pieces in this economy with the, the supply chain issues and the labor issues, the less moving parts, to me, it seems better. And, you know, and again, that goes to the SIPs. But the problem with the SIPs is, is not a lot of people that are using it. I haven't seen that much of a supply issue with the SIPs panels because they're really pretty easy to make. It's a block of foam that has two pieces of 18 gauge steel glued onto either side. And it comes off of a roll form factor.
Mike, let me interrupt you for- Let me, Mike, let me interrupt you for- Mike, let me interrupt you for, let me, Mike, let me interrupt you for just a moment.
Sure.
Talking about the three different types of construction.
So please also, Patrick, what, what I think counsel would really appreciate is a comparison of cost of the three, and the timeframe it would take for building. I think if you focus on that, we'll really appreciate it.
I think, I think I can answer that pretty quickly for you. Cost is probably going to be more for the pre-engineered building, slightly more than a, than a concrete block. You have, family has experience in CB. Slab, slab cost, you know what that is, but it may, it may, it changes by the day. But I think it, the least expensive of the buildings probably would be a standard CB construction, but you're going to have the timeline of building CB. SIPs will run probably about the same price. Mike and I have looked at the pricing on the SIPs, we've looked at the pricing on conventional. I've met with Fagan on that. We still think you're, those are going to be about the same price range. You know, by the time we're all finished, you're not going to save any money with SIPs. You are going to save time, and you're going to have higher energy efficiency in the building. But other than that, it, that's what you save going with SIPs. You go conventional, you're going to deal with subcontractors, but it's the same subcontractors that, that build conventional that build SIPs. We're, we're just changing concrete block to these structural panels.
Right, like you said, if Mr. Fagan was the project manager, he'd be in charge of overseeing the SIPs. But he would also be in charge of overseeing his own building if we had hired him to build the building.
That's correct.
Correct.
Well said, sir.
Right?
Yep.
Yes.
And now, now, I can't speak to engineered structures. I was here for the presentation when that was presented to you as an option. I remembered it was a little bit expensive, but the advantage to that is you get the slab ready. They all, they do all the work in the, in a giant building, and then they truck it on the road to you here and reassemble it all back together. I do not know that, that the pre-engineered building will meet the level four code. Mike, any, any knowledge on that?
I believe they could, they could make, they could engineer that.
Okay.
The level four, it's not, it, it's, the schools are a level three. I mean, from the engineering aspect, it's wind load, so it's just, it becomes more reinforcement, you know, and making sure that it's going to be possibly the higher grade window. They have to see what the code requires, whether it's going to take a Miami Dade window, which is a higher, it's a, a high velocity zone as opposed to a velocity zone.
Now, let me, let me cut you off for a second and jump back in again. I apologize for that. Mike and I think on two different levels, he is the technical go-to guy, and I'm kind of the, I want to see the whole picture, right? What's the big picture type of thing? So the answer to that is, we don't know if an engineered building meets the level four code. We don't know that the pricing that you received already and proposals you received meet those codes. You would have to go back to them and say, if it was seven fifty, does that cover all those issues, right? If it was eight hundred, or how much more is it to cover those issues? We were looking at pricing and, and I, you and I have talked about some of the budget issues. You know, cost per square foot, you know, you're, you're looking to say, can I build a building for six hundred thousand dollars? Can I build a building for three hundred thousand dollars? Let me help you out. Three hundred thousand dollars? Don't even start. I mean that.
Cut the grass.
Yes. Cut the grass and leave the slab alone. I, I think you're going to fall into a range that's going to be between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot to build a building. If your building's four thousand square feet, that's four hundred thousand dollars. That does not include site work, water retention, any connectivity that you've got to do, any demolition that you've got to do. Those are all issues that you have to work through.
Patrick, let's get clarification. At a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot, a four thousand square foot building would be six hundred thousand.
Correct.
You said four.
I don't add real well.
Between six and seven, just for the building.
That's correct.
Right, and that's, for us to remind ourselves, that's for the building. It doesn't include parking and all the other stuff that would, drainage, sewage, all that sort of thing.
So you're probably looking at a hundred and eighty if you kind of added those things in. So you're about at eight fifty, nine hundred thousand. Because even getting something built at a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot right now, normal build, I don't know about anything else.
Right.
That, I mean, I, I think now a hundred and seventy dollars a square foot's a, a good price for an upscaled house. I mean, it's inexpensive. I can't believe I say those words.
Yeah, we, we talked to, Fagan and I debated commercial construction the other day, and I needed a number for the church on the block portion of it. And his honest answer was, Pat, I don't know. I have to go to the block guy and get a bid from him, and that bid's only good for thirty days. So we are dealing with these supply chain issues and cost issues. I think if, if, if you were to say eight hundred thousand dollars, I would come back and say, you got to have another hundred thousand in there for your site work, for your, your amenities. There's FF, FFNA is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. You know, here we talk that.
Right. Right. To back up what you just said, I had a quote on repairing, redoing my dock. And that was in December. And when I called them back and said, let's talk, I'm kind of interested, they said, oh, by the way, the price is up eight percent from what you were given in December.
Less than two months later.
It was amazing, and it was quite a bit of money, too. So that, Patrick, and speaking to the audience, is the fear factor. Of fear, and I don't mean fear to the point of paralysis. I'd say fear to the point of being cautious, that the city does not want to commit itself into something that we're thinking is going to cost X amount of dollars, and then we get into something that's far beyond that, and we have to deal with that and explain that with our budgets and with our residents. It would be a, it would be something that wouldn't be well-appreciated, I guarantee you, if we got into something like that. So that's the level of cautiousness that this council's dealing with.
I understand.
That's one of the reasons, what Pat and I, I think, were stressing from the standpoint of having a good program to go from, so you know exactly what you're getting. And from what Pat mentioned about with the CM, the construction manager. At that point, the construction manager becomes responsible for the costing as the design, you have them early in on the process. So this way, they're able to put, pen to paper as you're going along and evolving the design. So you come up with the preliminary design, they could do an order of magnitude budget analysis. So this way, you're continually shaping the building and the cost at the same time. See where the trend, is there a trend going down? Is steel better than concrete? You know, as the different markets are moving. So I think that's one of the reasons why Pat was talking about having a CM and putting together the team sooner than later to evolve the project at the same time. So it all brings it all up, so you don't get any surprises at the end. That's why I said absolutely, you would never bid a job nowadays.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. He's spot on with that. One of the big decisions to, in my opinion, that faces this council is to make the decision to spend twenty to thirty thousand dollars of your money to bring on a team that will tell you exactly how the building should be designed and how it should be built. And then you can't get pricing until you have drawings for people to say, today, that block cost me five bucks, but tomorrow it may be six bucks. So you've, you've got to, you're in a tough time and a tough place, but you can't get anywhere. And, and I think until you make that decision to hire somebody to do your design work, architect, whoever, the, the, or my family, whoever the family decides to go with, right? So that, your, your steps, how you work through these steps, are you're going to have to fund some design work to be able to really get true pricing to protect the investment of the community. And I know that's what you're worried about, is, is making sure that every dollar you spend is done efficiently and effectively.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions or comments? We still have to let the public have an opportunity to speak.
That's enough for me. But I do appreciate the honesty and the integrity, and that's what we want. We want whatever decision is made, that we have not made a mistake or gotten ourselves in, in a situation that we did not intend to.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments.
One thing I can leave you with is you have simplified greatly the decision, the path of the decision council's going to have to make. Part of our issue was the various options, and you have really clarified what can be done and what can't be done. That's going to, I think, speed this process up. It's going to still be very difficult with our budgets, but we can, we can see, we can see the path now. You, you created the path for us, so much appreciated. And one last thing, you, you have done this, brought us, and if we had to hire someone with your expertise and with Mr. Panetta's expertise and pay them for this kind of report and this kind of effort, it would have cost us thousands of dollars. I realize that, I realize the fees that we paid for other studies, and sometimes those fees are unbelievable. So we are, just want to make sure you know, we are very, very grateful for everything you've done.
It's my honor to serve you. Any other questions for me?
It's just logic, and it's, it's, it's not hearsay, and that's what's appreciated, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
It's, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Are we going to discuss the, are we going to discuss now the, or are we discussing contract in the next section?
Well, we should have, we should have maybe public comment on this item, and then we'll get to the real, Mr. Senator. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment to what we just, yes? Ms. Dunn, as you know, you know the drill, name and address.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. I appreciate the presentation, it was very informative. However, I am very puzzled as to why having the police station in this building was not looked at, even if it meant that we could harden this building easier and add on to this building for additional space that would be needed if we put the police station here. We may not want to do it, it may not be the ideal thing, but in our current economy and the cost going up every day for everything, we may have to do some things that are not the optimal thing that everybody wants. We may have to make the best with what we do have. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, can we have our report on, you want to do the report on the contract on the?
Yes, and Mr. Aiken is here to speak to you about that.
Okay, excellent. Come on up, sir, yeah.
I'm going to excuse myself.
I'm Shepard, thank you.
One question I would have for you, Mr. Shepard, right as you're walking out the door. If the police department would move into this building, as just suggested, would this building then have to be converted to be a, an essential building, a central level four category?
That's up to the decision of the council.
With a police department?
I think you'd want a level four building.
Right, so this building could fall under the same issues as the church did.
I have not inspected this building, nor have I gone through it. Happy to do it for you.
Right. But my, my point is, it would have to be up to the same, it'd have to be up to a police station code, which is, right?
It would have the same issues that you have at the church.
That's what I'm saying.
Good bones, not the right bones.
Yes, ma'am, well said, well said.
On occasions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Van Aiken, my address is 615 East Silver Spring Boulevard, Ocala, Florida.
Hello, Ms. Aikens, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like to thank the staff for helping me gather all my information, or most all of it, in regards to the building and being able to present that information in an orderly fashion. Ms. Odom and Troy and Georgina and Chief McQuaid and Attorney Hand. I've really, they've been gone out of their way to help me, and that's been great. I've delivered to Ms. Odom yesterday a contract for purchase and sale of the church property that y'all have listed with me to sell for you. And I don't know if y'all had a chance to review the contract, but I, I believe that it is a good contract. We, the selling agent, which is Michelle Smith with Remax Premier Realty, is the selling agent, and I'm the listing agent on it. And I really, we worked hard over the weekend to try to get this contract put together for you so that you could review it now during the workshops prior to the city council meeting, which would be this following Monday. Some of the reasoning for the dates on the contract, which is the effective date, which would be asking for you to try to make a decision on the purchase price and the terms and condition of the contract are scheduled for February the fifteenth, which would be by the day after the city council meeting. We have to, with the seller, as the city of Dunellen, has to comply with this Florida statute 163, in which they've got to advertise it for thirty days. And so that's why we put a thirty-day inspection period, a thirty-day financing condition, and a thirty-day window to comply with the Florida statute, and then be able to basically approve the contract on March the fourteenth, which would be our next hearing date. And then with all that behind us, we could go ahead and close the transaction here with the city by the end of March. So basically, it's a thirty-day inspection period, thirty-day we get everything done. If we don't have another contract that comes in that's more acceptable, that you like better, then we go ahead and close it here at the end of March. So tried to do it as clean and expedient as we could with the timeframe that we have. If you looked at the letter from the buyer, they, they planned to use the center for the building for a center for children with special needs. And those special needs that there's specializing in is autism. And it kind of touches my heart just a little bit, maybe a little bit more than a little bit, about the need of them being able to use this building. And they have looked at it three times, and they feel like they can pretty much use the building as it is and don't have to go in there and remodel it.
Especially some of those rooms that are already painted.
Already, right.
I just wanted the police to leave.
But kind of the, the interesting thing was, when I was over there taking measurements of the building, Mr. Shepard and the architect, I can't think of his name, came in the building at the same time, so we were both in there looking at it at the same time. Little surprise with one of, some of the conditions that he, he came up with the building. Little surprise with one of, some of the conditions that he came up with the building. You know, it's a, it's a great building, but it does have a few issues. So with this contract, I would believe that you would either, and maybe I could refer to Mr. Hand, would they either accept, reject, or give us a counteroffer on the contract in regards to the terms and the purchase price? Or do they just leave this out there, kind of in the cloud for 30 days, and then advertise it to say, "We're fixing to sell the church"? I'm not sure about that.
It would really be the, the second course of action. So this being a course of workshop, there can't be any official action taken tonight. The property does need to be advertised before anything's accepted. Couldn't use the word, the term "offer" because that's binding accepted. But what counsel could do is, can have discussions, how you feel about this, and, you know, give a range or so forth where you're, if that wasn't what you thought was, what you wanted, give a range or something that you thought was more, you know, acceptable to you, and advertise it, and then evaluate all the offers, if any other offer came in, in 30 days on the same footing, and then choose where to go or choose to negotiate at that time.
So you would negotiate at the end of the 30-day period?
Yes, yes, but it doesn't preclude you from what I mean by offer, you know? When an offer is out there for real estate, it's accepted, it becomes a contract. There's nothing wrong with saying, "Well, this isn't what we were looking for. We were looking more in this range." There's nothing binding about that. That's just providing information. So if you wish to provide some information today at the workshop, you're certainly able to do so.
And if there was another offer, let's say within that 30-day period, someone else jumped in and offered $10,000 more, so what would happen then?
Well, within this time period, it's going to be advertised, and within 30 days it's going to come in, and then you'll evaluate it at the end.
You have to put 30 days on the new offer?
No, the way the statute works is that once the advertisement goes out, that's when offers can come in, official offers, and then at the end of that period, all of those are reviewed. So you'd review them at the end of the 30-day period.
I know you want some questions. Let me ask one more.
You're good.
So what would be, once we have the initial offer, and we know in 30 days, then we can negotiate, what would be the reason to respond before 30 days? Why not just let it sit there for 30 days, and then when 30 days is up, then, then we can talk about it?
That's up to counsel. Maybe to provoke or, not provokes, not the right word, but to
Encourage.
Encourage, you know, a, a different official offer. The offers only become official after that 30-day period.
Because if we negotiate within that 30-day period, and we think we have a understanding, that understanding can be turned upside down if someone within the 30 days jumps in and makes a better offer.
Well, there's a few things. The way the statute works, it's to allow the counsel room to consider things that are not just economic, you know, how property is going to be used, a number of things. It's not where, it's not that the city's obligated to take the highest and best monetary offer. So negotiation, and the way that I think of negotiation, it's basically, you know, an offer and a counteroffer. When they say "offer," that means legally binding. Someone shakes your hand, "I accept your offer," you now have a contract. So I'm not talking about negotiation, but if you know that, well, hey, we're just not going to go below a certain number, that's providing information. That's not negotiation. Or if you know you don't feel good about something, it's like, "I, I don't feel good about this," you're not providing a counteroffer. You're just saying, "Well, I think, this is what I think is, you know, would be an acceptable number." That's information, not negotiation. So counsel can take this as it is, wait for it to become an offer during the offer period, and act on it at the time along with any other offers, or provide additional information as to what you're looking for. It's already been listed for a particular price, so that's been an indication of what you're looking for.
Any other questions, counsel?
Yes.
And I did provide to Mandy for public records, and I did provide to each of y'all. Being the little realtor that I am, I did just kind of give us a synopsis of what the offer price and such is, and then I just, I, as, you know, my real estate cap, I kind of saw some things that I wanted to make sure that we all kind of looked at, just reading the contract and stuff. Of course, I am not an attorney, nor do I ever want to be an attorney, so Mr. Hand is, of course, the expert. And for Mr. Van Aiken, this is a hard one for you, because what Mr. Hand just described goes totally against what you and I have to do, is realtors not tell everybody else what our offers are. So it's kind of a, we don't usually give out that information. We're not supposed to. So, and it's hard for us to do, and I, but I think some of my problems were, we can't accept it on the 15th of February because we have to do our 30 days to let anybody else's offers come. Personally, we can't close on March 31st, even if we accepted this offer on whatever day, February or March 15th, let's say, because title companies, just getting the municipal lien searches, are taking anywhere between three, about three weeks. Now, we can ask them to go ahead and perhaps start the procedure, but I can just tell you that it's not an over, I mean, closing right now, it's only supposed to take three weeks, and we're going to push it to the max. So that's just a problem with that. And, you know, her going for financing, I already, you know, so we do need a proof of funds or a preapproval letter, and you've already worked on that. And that should be just a part of the qualification, maybe in the realtor's notes, if they just automatically do that. That way, we're not having to play that guessing game with them. And it is already an RBO, because that was part of it. She wanted the city to change it to residential business office, but according to Georgina and Marion County, it is already an RBO, so that is not something that we would have to do. Correct, Georgina?
County's RBO, but it might be a
I thought it was something different for us. That's why I was wanting to make sure.
We rezoned it in public.
That's what I thought.
We talked about rezoning it back to RBO if we were going to sell it, but, but we did a rezon, and it was, and it's public.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was, yes, so
Are you, the Marion County information is outdated?
Okay.
It would have to be updated if I
But, but that's just something that, and again, the public, I think, what they're, and that's something that you can look at to see if, because if it's public, I think they can do what they want to do with the property now. And it's not, in my opinion, it's not the city's obligation to change it. That would be a buyer's obligation to change it. And the repairs on line 121, that should be zero, not, I mean, I would recommend putting zero or a monetary amount in there, and not one and a half percent of the sales price, because that gets expensive real quick. And for our closing costs, I did call Clear Choice Title today, asking them, you know, if we had a previous owner's policy and those types of things. And basically, we would save money, because we don't pay, as I put in the document, we don't pay documentary stamps, of course, we don't pay county tax or city taxes on the building, and we would receive a discount on the title insurance, and I did give those figures to Mr. Van Aiken as well. So he does have that information, if we were to sell it at $375,000. If I were a buyer, I would like to know, at least, if the city council thinks this is a price point that we can work with, or do we think they need to come back to us? But I hate going back and forth with somebody now, because it seems to me it gives them an, it gives somebody else an unfair advantage by, well, they're going to take $375, so all I have to do is offer $385. I mean, I mean, to me, it just kind of gives, so I, I don't think I would personally feel comfortable until the end of the 30 days negotiating an exact price with this individual or any other individual that might come forward within the next 30 days. Again, that's my, my real estate hat being put on there as well. And I, and I do agree with you. The, the plan for the building is absolutely wonderful. I think it, I mean, again, like you said, she could go in there, or they could go in there, and the rooms are already decorated mostly for them, and in my opinion, it'd be a great fit for them. So I, I, you know, and I'm not upset about the price either, but I don't know how the rest of y'all feels. So those are my comments. I did give them to you in writing.
I swear, I, I like her strategy. My instincts are to just sit here for 30 days, and at the end of the 30 days, start the real negotiating.
With, with telling her that we, I mean, I think we would need to tell anybody who comes to us, like, "Hey, you're so far out of the ballpark, you know, don't talk to us," or, "Or you know what? This is a good, this is something that we will maybe be able to work with." I, I just think we need to give that, especially the first buyer, something to let them know. If they're not in the ballpark, then we need to let them know that they need to go back to the drawing table. But I think we do need to have her rewrite, or them rewrite, the acceptance date, the close date, and we need a preapproval letter. That's my, my biggest points to take away.
Thank you. Any comments, Ms. Dunn?
I do believe that the reason that we changed the zoning is because it was purchased by the city, and that's almost automatic, then, to make it public. And so that just sailed right through, because the use would have been, at that time, anticipated to be a police station. Typically, if the use changes, it goes back to the original use, which would be an RBO. And I shouldn't think that that would be a price point. I would think it'd just automatically go back to the RBO. I would refer to the attorney, I guess, to look at that. But typically, the use is what is going to determine what the proper zoning would be. So it would be RBO, if it had been RBO prior to it being either a church, which was also public, or a police station.
Ms. Williams? A question I would have, Ms. Smith, at the, at the price of $375, when all the expenses would be taken out, would it be a net gain for us, a net loss, or would it be a push?
Right now, is what I've calculated, it's, and it's small, but it's a net, a net.
It's a
It's what we've had in the, in the
So we would have, at that price, we will have lost some money?
No, no.
A net gain?
A net gain.
Oh, I thought you said negative.
No, net gain is about $6,000.
So, so we're, we're whole, or possibly $6,000 in
Yes, sir.
Very, very good. Any other questions? Ms. Aiken, thank you so much.
So, so we need to give him some direction.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We're going to put this on the council meeting, correct? Mandy?
Well, I, I can go ahead and start the advertising tomorrow. I mean, I can go ahead and get that ball rolling, get it out on the website. I'm not, I'm not going to be able to get anything in a newspaper until next week. So Andrew, would, would the 30 days start with the publication on the website, or, it doesn't have to be in the newspaper?
On the, on the publication, there is a particular ad, so yes, with the newspaper. It has to be by newspaper, having general circulation.
Okay, so the 30 days won't start until I get it in a newspaper next week?
Why is it taking a week to get it in a newspaper?
Because most of their deadlines for next week are this week.
Okay.
Or tomorrow.
Well, got to do what you got to do. So you're, you're looking for
So that's going to affect the dates in the proposal?
Okay.
Because we, I won't, we won't start the 30-day clock until the advertisement goes in that week.
For direction from counsel to do that? It's done by a consensus?
And I think we had already said, when we voted on this, to give them permission to do that when we got a offer that we have.
Amen. So then we gave you that permission already? I believe so. Okay. In that motion, and
Well, let's just make sure, is there, is there a consensus to direct staff to advertise it? Okay, so if it hadn't been done, it has been.
Okay. So, and, and for Mr. Van Aiken, does he need to go back to the other agent and at least give them better dates? And is this something that we can work with then? Yes, sir?
Yes, I need to explain that I would not start my inspections and my financing until I had a contract from the city.
Absolutely.
So you would have an acceptance of the contract price, and you would still have the exception for the financing and the inspection period, because you wouldn't want to go in there and pay for an appraisal and pay for an inspection of the building when you didn't have a binding contract with the seller to sell it to you. So those dates will have to be coordinated, and I can coordinate that.
Well, the effective date wouldn't be until the date in March, let's just say March 21st. I'm just making up a date. Let's say March 21st is going to be the effective date, and that's from the 30 days and the five days to get the application would all start taking place.
Exactly, but do we have to have the counsel at the next meeting approve the contract? Because you might have other, multiple contracts, and do we need to wait till the next council meeting, which would throw that into March?
That's what I'm saying. We can't give you an answer.
No, we can't, that would be throwing it into April. Yeah, that's going to throw that effective date into April.
Yes, it will. So, yes, they won't be able to close until June.
Okay, all right. Well, we can work those dates out. That's not an issue. The other issue I have, this school, I mean, or this, would this be allowed in a public use, or would it have to be changed back to RBO?
I believe you have to do a change in the zoning to RBO, which is the zoning
Public wouldn't allow a school?
Well, normally, it would go back to an RBO if it was, if, if a contract came in and they wanted to use it that way. But since they're using it at school, in that particular instance, it would stay.
It's not a school.
Okay, well
It would be a center. I would have to check the code to make sure that it's within the RBO
It looks like it. I've read the code. It looks like it is to me, that it would be an allowed use. But they would need to have that zoning changed also during that inspection period, so that would throw it out to the next meeting for the city council to approve the zoning change.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
We'll work on these dates and work on the language in the contract to present you an acceptable contract for you to review in 30 days.
Sounds good. But are we, I mean, like, is she in the ballpark of that $375?
I would say the asking price of $410
How about?
And a proposal of $375, I'd say normally, that's in the ballpark.
Counsel, you may, let me just note, in the contract, item number 23, additional terms, it says seller will have zoning change to RBO at their expense prior to closing.
That's what I said, was one of my issues with that. Because it's usually the buyers, I mean, you know better than I do.
And I couldn't tell based upon the code what was the expense to, for a zoning change, based upon the criteria. I couldn't, I'm looking at the sheets that Georgina had sent me, and I couldn't tell how much it cost. I don't think they got a problem paying for it, but y'all got to approve it.
They're just advertising costs and attorney's fees, you know, associated. Usually, those are pass-through fees. If, if we have an application for a rezon
Okay.
We have pass-through fees. And so the applicant would pay for any expenses for advertising or attorney's fees. So I have to go back and look at one that was not city-initiated to see what type of expense that would be. But we had talked about this, when we talked about putting the church on the market, about doing a city-initiated rezon and going ahead and getting that done, because it might make the property more attractive to someone who could use it as a business, rather than be limited to a public zoning.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, on that same note, it seems like we would have to schedule the planning commission to review this, so we have the dates for the planning commission, and then it will come to so we have the dates for the planning commission, and then it would come to town.
What I can tell you, a few options, I mean, first is to, of course, examine and see if public works for right now. And I can't opine on that, and I don't, you know, I don't know enough about the project. I do see a community education center as permitted in public. If that qualifies for that, then that sets up the zoning. But if it does need to be rezoned to something else, either that can just be done by the applicant after the sale, which, you know, puts that on them, or as, when the church was purchased, there can be a contingency within the contract that the purchase is contingent upon rezoning. And then if the council, you know, we can't give away the legislative decision-making process contractually, but assuming that occurs, then the transaction will close after that. And that's one way to structure, to ensure that the zoning is in place. Be automatic per se, that does have to go through the zoning process, including going to the planning commission, as you stated.
So Ms. Odom, who's Shepard's at, who initiates to make sure that's put in motion?
The zoning?
Yes.
The staff?
Staff, okay. So you need a consensus on that?
Yes, and we can get that started, that process started.
Okay, do we have a consensus? Okay. All right, you have the consensus.
I have one.
I think that Councilwoman Hancha also mentioned this, but in terms of the use that this future building would be, it really seems very positive in terms of what we would expect and hope for in that area.
Yeah, that's exciting, I mean, it's so, you know, I just think it's great. It's good for the neighborhood, it's good for everything, if it comes together. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Do we need any public comment on the Smiths?
They're not taking any action.
Okay. Everyone, please allow council about a five-minute break before we go into our regular workshop, okay? We'll adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back in five minutes.